Board of Hardman County Council, this is the official of the county president. Please take off your hats and blue balls. Move your hats, turn on yourself over, pay yourself please. Thank you. All right, meeting will come to order. We'll have our prayer and pledge and our prayer will be by Commissioner Mashawn Gattan, please sir.
May we all bow? Most gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for allowing us the opportunity to come together and take care of the business of the county. We ask that things that we do be done for the edification and the glorification of your kingdom, heavenly Father, and deeds and other blessings. We ask in your name, the son of Jesus' name, for his name's sake we pray. Amen.
And Commissioner Miller will lead us in the pledge, please sir.
Thanks for the pledge.
I lay the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, just as for all.
All right, may we proceed. Come to order, please. All right, Madam Kirk, if you would like to proceed, we will have a roll call, please.
Bell?
Here.
Bumper?
Here.
DeMerry?
Here.
Gallin?
Here.
Gillum?
Here.
Brantham?
Here.
Hansley?
Here.
Jenkins?
Here.
Kennamore?
Here.
Lake?
Here.
Lanier?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Sane?
Here.
Vickers?
Here.
Wayne?
Here.
All right, next time we have a public forum, anything on the agenda, anybody that likes to speak, it's in the irons. We'll move into number five here on our agenda. It's approved minutes from the September sixteenth meeting. Motion has been made, Department of State, to approve the minutes and discuss on the motion or the minutes. Seeing none? Okay, all those in favor, please signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. All right, we got the minutes approved from last one. Meeting, we don't have any notaries, so we will go ahead and move on to the next one. That will be number seven for the reports for our county officials, departments, committees, and we see Mr. Swift here, Mr. Smith, if you'd like to come up, please sir.
Good evening, listeners. I have one thing on my documents. The board and I were presented with a proposal request for same line. Our board met, I thought we said, when they presented the road, they had everything in order for the road to be closed, everybody's agreement, and our board voted all, all voted for it to close it, and we're ready for you guys to, for our vote to close same line. If you have any question, we'll be asked.
Where is that?
It's off a same road, so then I will be like, oh, we're kind of in that watershed.
Close the road or is it?
Close the road, yes. It's going to be private, it becomes private road.
Oh. How many houses?
There's only one house, I've got the three owners and all the owners. But she had, she's actually here, she, she's the one who requests the road, and she got all of everybody to sign off on it, because we can't close the road unless everybody agrees, and she has it out there. All parties, which should be, she made a copy of it, and we have everybody's, a letter from everyone saying their final proposal. She's going to put a gate up and get her private access, so all three of them have, all three property owners have access to it.
So we-
Light it up now or asphalt?
Just grab it.
Grab it.
It'll be private, it'll become a private road, yes. Would it be changed to what, same lane or is it?
I mean, we'll just take our name down, so it'll be same lane, it'll be just private entrance. So once you, once you close the road, you take it off or it becomes just a private road. Now, she, she's leaving the same lane, that's fine, but it will be taken off between the road, you have to, you have to make sure it's not taken off.
Yeah. Yes, you'd have to give the nine one one as well to make the corrections, we have to. Ms. Taylor here?
Yeah.
She was here.
Do you have anything to say on that, Ms. Taylor, or you're?
No, the reason I'm doing is a lot of people come up there just looking. I've got trashed stuff, the whole couch, trash bag, trash bags, condoms, you name it, and sometimes people drive all the way up because there's no turnaround. They're coming all the way up into, to the house, which is three quarters of a mile, and turning around, and I'll ask them if there's anything I can do, and I'm just looking. And so, I've dealt with it for a long time. My husband passed away four years ago, I'm up there by myself, and I, it's a little uncomfortable when someone's coming up there and not knowing who they are or what their intentions are.
Kirsty, I have a question. So if somebody wanted to turn a private road back to the county road-
You have to follow, you have to follow the Resolution eight thirty-one, which they have to follow the county standards to, they have to bring it up to the county standards before the county can consider taking it. So the Resolution eight thirty-one, I don't know if everybody knows it, but you have to have six inches gravel, three layers chips here, and asphalt, for the county to even consider taking that over. If there's no other questions, we just request approval for, to take off the road list.
I hope it will be approved.
Thank you. All right, I would have been about to say, any discussion on the motion, any discussion on the proposal?
Uh, I-
Sir, you recognize this-
You said nine one one, what were that doing?
I mean, like I said, it's still going to be called, considered the same line. If she chooses to change it to something else, you will have to go nine one one and request that change.
You said you'd take the sign down.
We're going to take the sign down, yes. Or we'll take the stop sign down, because no one comes to that property. Now, she chooses to leave it the same line, we can leave the sign up or whatever, but when you make a road private, that green sign no longer is, all green signs in the county are county roads. Blue signs are private roads, or if you want to throw a sign, it all is private. It's a lane, it's a drive, and stuff like that, but the only county roads that are signed in part are green signs. Everything else is private.
That's a good one, Mr. R.
Yeah, no, 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 no. It shouldn't, it shouldn't affect it. If she leaves it, it shouldn't be the same. It's just, if you leave the name sign up, I mean, and I'll get with her and ask to see if she wants to-
Yeah, because I don't know if she's going to put a gate up.
Yeah, she goes, she goes with the gate.
That could pose a problem too, if something happens and she needs a law or needs an ambulance or something, you know, when you're private.
Well, that's, that's, that's what she's taking on when you close the road off. Any, any private road when you close it, say you're on a field out in the middle of nowhere, you have a case.
She just needs to know that, you know, if they can't get to you, you're laying there sick and you can't get a gate up off or something.
That's a problem, Carol.
No, it's not a road off, just a-
Yeah. All right, we've got any more discussion of the motion? All right, we've got a motion on the floor, motion second. All those in favor, signify the same.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
Thank you, commissioners.
Motion passed. In case you thank you for, two more things here, the fact that we talked about it in just a little while. All right, Dr. Smith, welcome back. See you in a little while. Good to see you, ma'am.
They did have some budget amendments, but before that, um, she was a good youth that we received, um, that he can come back to school with kids, but it's not accurate, and that's what, what we did all day every day, but we are super proud of all the group they are in, live the finals for us to school. We've been celebrating that for about a month now. We're very proud of the hard work they put in, that's a huge achievement, I can say, just to say. Um, another thing that we are really proud of is that we made a huge improvement in every subject, every grade, and every school. That is absolutely phenomenal for our district, and we are extremely proud of all of our teachers and students and the families that have supported that. The other update I'll be using about our middle college program with Jackson State, where she was getting her associate's degree in high school. Two years ago, we started that program. This past year, I told you, we have twenty-one students that graduated with that. This fall, we have seventy-one kids in our middle college program. So we got seventy-one juniors and seniors out there earning college credits every day. So we're really proud of that program, program by the state, girl. Um, to the budget amendments, I have several. The first one at the top there is called TISA on behalf of payments. This is for our ACT tests that the state requires us to give, and also for our individualized education account programs. These are things that the state pays someone directly for, but we have to put in our books. So this has to run through our books, through our budget, and that's what the TISA on behalf is. The second one, anybody who's model, this is a grant. We are in our last year of this grant, and it's been a phenomenal thing for our schools to have, provided us a lot of opportunities, a lot of equipment, especially in our TTE programs. You'll see that the bulk of that money has been regular instruction equipment. A lot of that has gone to rip out by libraries. We're trying to make those into more tech hubs. Central has theirs completed, North High School is complete, all the others have things. We've done a lot of stem work. We purchased equipment for our mechanics and things like that. So that is the second and third page, so I'm flipping those. So if you'll go to page three, because he published a school security grant. That is a grant for the governor's office that we have received specifically for security. We're using that money to put what they call the barriers, the concrete barriers, in front of some of the schools' entrances that do not currently happen, to keep automobiles from running in those. I believe it's one speaker in junction, follow the middle, and one other one. But that's with barriers there, and also to provide hard access, pro, uh, entry cars for our staff that sit in other schools. We have them at the two high schools, and they can record student enters, it's able to turn on and off, so that we can have better security measures. The next one is the state special education preschool grant. This is a grant that runs year to year. We don't really know if we're going to receive it until about July. This is for one teacher and one assistant in a special prepay grant, in the section that followed earlier. So those are the budgets. The next section are amendments. The prepay budget, as you know, we do our budget in May. It is approved, we do not give these numbers finalized until July or August. So we have gone in and revamped this, and what this basically amounts to is that they decreased that budget by sixty-five dollars and forty-four cents. You can see that on page four. The next one on page four, teacher bonus. This is the ten thousand dollar bonus that the state gave to certain teachers that they have certain qualifications. They gave us the money directly, we gave it to the teachers, it was just, we were just floodgird. It had to include the district, we had chief of teachers, that was all done through the state and the governor's office, but we had to show this coming in and going out. What they did was they came back and we had, they all had seventy-one one hundred, which is our teacher account, and they said that we had to put it into official end, TTE, whichever area that the teachers were in, we had to go back and put off into county numbers in there. So that's what this amendment does. The last one on the bottom of that page, the next page, is administrative equipment. We had two copiers go out, and it's listed lately, we're going to try to purchase, and it's also service plans for some of the other ones. So that is purchasing new copiers.
Well, can they have any copiers?
That leaves three, but it's also service point.
Yeah, on those, on those three, the service.
Question on the budget amendment?
On the public school, uh, security grant, uh, you said the two high schools currently have the card entrance, so the other seven schools will now have that.
The teachers will go and pack.
The teachers will, so all nine schools will have that card entrance.
The high schools, the kids have it as well.
Right.
Because so many buildings on campus, but I think the elementary and the middle school is just going to teach us that.
You know what about the school areas, you said West school?
Great Junction, Moore City, follow the middle. I think there's an area of those high school and follow the elementary.
So why the elementary side, I think so.
The way that they had all of them, then those middle and all of them before.
Oh, yeah.
Any other questions for Dr. Smith?
Dr. Smith, we said the TISA those, that first, on that first page, you said it's general purpose. Did you say what those, uh, hundreds are going to be used for?
That forty thousand is the state paid for our ACT test, or, they pay ACT directly, and that's the amount they do. And the other one is the individualized education account.
What's the, over, the last page, over contract services?
That's the service, I don't know the topic, the service one.
All right, any other questions for Dr. Smith, please? Seeing none, is your motion approved?
So moved.
Motion has been made, is your second, just for-
Second.
Motion has been made, second, in discussion. All right, seeing none, uh, Madam Kirk, a roll call, please.
Bell?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
DeMerry?
Yes.
Gallin?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Brantham?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Jenkins?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
All right. Great. Could you come up, please, sir? Our landfill, uh, had some information to board, going to share tonight, if you would, please.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I got this letter a little while ago, it's good news, I didn't know they'd just share several things, but, uh, this letter, this from T. A., uh, from this police deputy's office. And it's, uh, I've got my eyes down in my car, I didn't bring my records.
I'll read one at the end.
Ooh, man, that's a lot, though.
All right.
This is addressed to, uh, Commissioner Kennamore, the, our chair of the solid waste committee. To the Tennessee Department of Environmental Conservation, the business of solid waste management, please inform you that the department and county in the central solid waste region achieved a twenty-five percent waste reduction and diversion goal as we visit the Tennessee COVID data. Real home, and, uh, Tennessee solid waste processing and disposal rule. Uh, according to the solid waste diversion data, gather, it's part of the twenty twenty-four annual progress report, the region achieved a thirty-seven percent diversion rate. So the department also received the updated region's tenure solid waste plan. So what that means is, they, they set a goal for us to at least do twenty-five percent, and we passed that, which, uh, is good, and it opens the awards, it helps us later on when we participate in grants and stuff, and shows the group doing, doing a good job. Uh, the other news I want to share is, we did get approved for a waste production grant. Uh, the total was two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars. And, uh, we can use the grant, uh, for equipment, uh, items we were going to be purchasing, a wheel loader that will be used, smaller wheel loader that can use in the recycle building. Um, it'll help us managing, uh, the tonnages that we can, we get in. It's a lot safer than having a big one, uh, inside, most of the times when traffic comes in there, that can come issue. We're also, we're going to buy, uh, three compacters and four open top boxes. With that, uh, we're going to be updating a couple of the center locations that have the same style compacters, the two piece compacter, uh, we want to give them, where they're all the same. Uh, that's a good thing to cause, right now, uh, seeing when the truck goes out to get the old style compactor, they have to, they're going to get a deadhead, come back, and they go back again, and it costs us trips, and we get charged our contract, so it won't be much trips. But this allows us to get all the centers on the same style compactor. And with open top boxes, uh, we hopefully will be able to, and I talked to them there about this, uh, maybe perhaps have one that floats around, two that floats around, and have, have it advertised, and have it to wear, uh, I know it's hard for folks, a lot of times we bring mattresses in, odd pieces of furniture, and stuff like that. So if we had one designated where we can segregate that out from the regular garbage, uh, that we can go straight to the landfill, dump us and process it.
Yeah, yeah.
So hopefully, we'll be able to do that, and that's hopefully good news for the citizens, because I know that's a concern, and a lot of these, you know, folks don't know, what am I supposed to do with this, you know, they'll take the mattress and make it different, I don't have time to get rid of the landfill, you know, maybe it comes a hassle, but I understand that. So we're trying to make it where it's easier, not only for you guys, uh, guys, but also for the citizens, they have more opportunity, uh, for the waste that they have.
Agreed? And yeah.
You have a question. Are you going to bring back to this community center or maybe go to the county on what convenience centers are going to get compacters, which ones are not, which ones are going to be updated, which ones maybe not? Are you going to come back later on? I don't know if you want to do that tonight.
No, well, the two that will be changing out to the new style, or the style that we use now, are, uh, the Grand Valley location and Fort Hines location, and both of those locations do quite a bit of tonnage. Uh, we don't currently have a compactor at Powell Chapman Road, we don't have one out, uh, in Pine Grove, which is in the Sullivan area. Uh, we just, they took them out a while back, and the tonnages that they do, we can service it with their open top box, uh, we found. And that saves us trips, you know, gets into the, if I'm a little curious, I'm going to travel out there and get it and that kind of stuff, but, um-
So Pine Grove and, and which other location does not have a compactor?
Uh, Powell Chapman.
Powell Chapman. Everyone else has it.
That's right. Well, now Hornsby doesn't, but we have two boxes there. Uh, we, we applied for a grant, uh, to start going and updating the Hornsby location, we did not get approved of that grant. And I think it was strictly, it's not because we didn't present the need, it's just, I think the state, it was, their funds were getting short on the grants they would allow, and we had just gotten the two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars grant.
So, uh, I'm bringing that to attention, Hornsby, for just a moment. I know we've talked about it for quite some time about putting some kind of barrier there, some kind of landscaping barrier. The thing is, right on the highway.
Right.
I saw, see.
Right.
Uh, is there, is there any way we can use some of this funding, maybe to?
We can't, I have to tell you, but the grant tells us we can do, we have to, they're very stringent on what you use it for, you have to spell it out. Uh, we actually have gone back and forth about five times with the, uh, analyst that approves it, and we just now today got the letter saying everything was good to me. So that was a good sign. He said, now I have to have it peer reviewed and then their manager, which, I know their manager, she'll sign off on it, but, uh, anyway. But we can maybe look at, uh, some funds elsewhere, uh, that we can move over, that we haven't a lot of.
That, that's my biggest concern there, is you just being right on the, I don't really, it's off the beaten path, hey, lady.
And we'd like to get something where we could build an elevation. At Hornsby, if we don't do a compactor, build an elevation where you can drive, like at the tune, drive up in the south Florida.
Right.
Throw your bag up and just drop it over.
I know you know the concerns, so appreciate all your hard work, and, and thank you.
I hate that they move so slowly, especially with grants, and y'all know about that, it's, it's slow and lasses sometimes, but thankfully, we got this one. So here.
Thank you.
Good.
I think the Hornsby facility, uh, winter's coming on when it's pitching holes, or a lot.
The gravity.
The gravity, two bullet holes when it rains, those ruts are well deep.
Right.
With it, some down tangent, you, folks will be glad to meet with that one day, we can get a couple of O B M four's, whatever, put in those ruts, we got to do some, some hunter company.
Thank you. All right, any questions? Thank you, sir. Thanks, appreciate it. Yeah, crank your glasses, thank you, sir, thanks. Ron, you have any back there, Scott?
I mean, I can give an email permit, you may ask if you want.
While you're coming up, well, you can see our rescues for hot folks back there. We're glad to have you all, uh, glad to have you here tonight, and, uh, and many of our officials here, uh, this school board members back there, who represent the show, well, glad y'all are here. So, go ahead, Mr. Parker. Uh, this is school board members back there, who represent the show, well, glad you all are here, so, go ahead, Mr. Parker.
Uh, so far for this year, we've had a hundred and nine permits pulled, totally twenty-nine thousand, a hundred and thirty-four cents. And that's very good track this month to to be one of the top months. Charles Tucker, come in, hopefully.
That's right, thank you, thank you, sir. All right, Sheriff, you have something for us, sir?
I do, uh, I believe we'll live the rest first. Uh, here today. We have uh picked up twenty-nine thousand, two hundred and forty pounds of garbage. Uh, October was four thousand, two hundred and forty pounds. Uh, we also have uh, uh, in our grant, no dumping signs, no dumping allowed. Uh, if any of y'all would like to see something put up in y'all's district, just let me know, and I will be y'all's, let me share, so, let y'all be visible to get it put up. Uh. Arrest, you've had, uh, dislump. Hundred and thirteen arrests, six point reports of criminal incidents, twenty-two thefts and burglaries, seven traffic offenses, one drug offense, three assaults, three sex offenses, three vandalism, four harassment threats or intimidations. Uh, free counterfeit, four rear scam fraud, one outlanded flight, two uh abusing neglect, and two two house. That's it.
Sheriff, I have a question, you said you have the no dumping signs, do you all have already places you're going to put those up?
We have already put some up, yes, and uh if, like you said, you got some uh some somewhere in your area that you need some put up, just let me know.
Where have you put them?
We have put some out on uh. And this road, um, there was another road, we just got it again, so we, we, it's pretty good for us. But we've put a few roads.
We might need to apply at some point, if you can add cameras in those grants, I'm not sure if you can, but may have to get another grant for those.
Probably have to get another grant for those, but uh when we rewrite the grant for next year, uh, I'll see, since we can approve them for any bad grant.
So do you put the signs by the dumpsters, or this one, like where are?
Well, anywhere you see a dumpster, that's what we're starting to do, no dumping allowed.
Yeah, there's a lot of that's going on in the county, we've got campaigns to clean up, and uh hopefully we'll be getting to the associations, some of the churches trying to figure out how to take, how to take the county in different quads. Sex goes off, and we try to do cleanup days at different times. Um, because it's only so much that the litter grant, and people are out working, picking up trash, as you can see, that that much tonnage, but man, we've got to do better.
We do have to clean up a road, a month later, they call it back, saying it's worse than what it was when it was done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, it's, it's a problem.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, we're moving on here, we've got uh, uh, we did have Mrs. Diane Devlin from U. Two College of Nursing, but I believe she's substitute for Ms. Lisa here.
Yes.
Welcome to Hardman County.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, ma'am commissioner, thank you for your time and opportunity to be here tonight. My name is Lisa Beasley, I am faculty in the College of Nursing at University of Tennessee Health Science Center. I'm a family nurse practitioner and an advanced forensic nurse, and this is my colleague.
I'm Andrea Sebastian, I'm also faculty in the College of Nursing, um, teaching D. F. and practice at the Monticle Hospital, um, as a forensic nurse practitioner.
So why we're here tonight is, uh, we received a grant, uh, to provide a mobile health unit to Hardman County. And um the services that it would provide would be a full nurse practitioner to see patients in primary care, and a full psychiatric mental health nurse practitioner. And where our role comes in, we are hoping that we can maybe close the gap between, um, I I know that sexual assaults probably go to West Tennessee Healthcare. Um, but since we're forensic nurses, hopefully we can close that gap, and provide some of those services, maybe telepathing, that's one of the things we're hoping. Um, we know that you all have challenges, um, there are challenges all over the, all over the country of healthcare. But this mobile health unit is nurse-led, it is grant-funded, and it's designed to bring these health, essential health services directly to you all, uh, in your community. So we do have another mobile health unit, so we do have experience in doing this, uh, it's in Lauderdale and Lake County. So we're looking forward to hopefully being introduced to other leaders such as yourselves, and spread the word, and to bring the unit here. And we hope you're looking very supportive. Yeah, yeah. Not just support, but.
Any questions that you have?
Yeah, how long would the unit be? It would only be involved, or would it go around to others?
So it'd be, uh, through at Hardman County, and we also would have it in Haywood County, so it's split its time, and I don't know exactly how that happened yet. The other unit is that we have in Lake and Lauderdale, it's two days in Lake and two days in Lauderdale. And then it's out a day for, um, like restocking and, um, administrative things that you have to do for, like a clinic.
So how long is it here, six months, a year?
Oh, great, oh, well, okay, so the grant is for three years. But what we're hoping is that we can build it sustainably, we will, um, if, we will see patients who have insurance and build their insurance. But if you don't have insurance, we would see patients who don't have insurance for for no money. Um, so, or maybe a nominal, that's not been worked out yet, so we would love for it to be long term, just a.
Wonderful program, wonderful brand, you know about that, the last two months, it's a great program. We will let it start again, this is.
So we, if this is a good unit, so we, you know, this state, we work for this state, and um. It's in procurement right now.
Yeah.
So we've got all these bids, and we've got to do the scoring on the bids, and uh, so we're hoping that we can get the unit by the summer. And then, and and that kind of tracks with our last unit, if we use it, uh, if we get it from the same company that we had the last unit from.
But we already have like, uh, we already got positions posted, so like S.A. should be starting soon, it's a baby for our community and start helping the people and things like that, so hopefully by the time it's up and running, we'll hopefully be in better spot.
And we can tell health.
I have a question, so once this is up and running, uh, for twenty-six, will it be served as business days or five business days?
Mm-hmm, yeah, and uh, the other unit, we got some community events, and like, they have Alzheimer's blogs, or breast cancer awareness blogs, and things like that, and. We we want to be visible, and we want to support the community, and do those kinds of things too, so, you know, do you have anything, you know, parade, or July or picnics, I don't, I don't know, but.
It's a mobile unit.
It's a mobile, yeah, it's a mobile unit. Um, there's a lot of ways into it, I'm sure you don't know, but, um, and right now, our current one, the heat's out, so.
Any more questions? Lisa, thank you.
Thank you, and we have some cards, marketing cards, and we have our business cards, so we'd be happy to leave with.
Yeah.
Whoever. Yeah, for sure.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you, someone. All right, and uh, Adele will not be uh here tonight, or Ms. Skinner, uh, for our convention that day, she's one of four. Uh, we have her in West Tennessee, she's only one of four in the entire state, but we're we're very proud to have her. Uh, she'll be here next month, because that is Alzheimer's Awareness Month in November, so she's going to be moved. And uh now we're going to turn it over to our budget chair, Commissioner Leir, who would be, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, the budget committee made Thursday, October sixteen, and they did approve of budget amendments one through nine, as you saw in the packet, with uh no need for five and eight, uh, to come to the full commission. These are pretty safe and secure, and all together. Starting with number one, there would be a correction on one and two, you're definitely creating a total, should be four eighteen, eight forty-five, eighty-three. Four eighteen, eight forty-five, eighty-three. Which is a number top instead of being done. And uh, the reason this money's moving twice is being recognized as as revenue, and then moved out of the fund balance, uh, to the appropriate line item. So it's debiting, uh, other state grants, four eighteen, eight forty-five, eighty-three, crediting the fund balance, four eighteen, eight forty-five, eighty-three. And then it's debiting the fund balance, four eighteen, eight forty-five, eighty-three, and crediting airport improvements, which is where they spend, um, four eighteen, eight forty-five, eighty-three. Reason to recognize the grant received, and move the money into airport improvements. Uh, number two, county clerk's office. Uh, also your debit credit total should be thirteen thousand, one forty, not twenty-six, two eighty. And that's uh. Debiting, uh, Miss Lady three fund thirteen, one forty, uh, crediting the fund balance thirteen, one forty, and debiting the fund balance thirteen, one forty, crediting refunds thirteen, one forty. And your reason is on the right. Uh, recognized refund based on the comptroller investigator report of the name of September eighteen, twenty-five, and move money into the county clerk's office. Uh, number three, accounting services, debiting, uh, county bookkeeper, ten thousand, nine forty-five, crediting contract private agencies, ten thousand, nine forty-five. And that's uh some good news, we have Linda Ernest, as a side, remain with the county. Uh, number four, sheriff's department, debiting the fund balance twenty-four thousand, four forty-seven, crediting employer Medicare, twenty-four, four forty-seven. And reading on the right, it was on the original budget, the first reading, but when transferred to local government, it was not keyed in, uh, the second reading. Uh, number five, already approved by the budget committee, uh, number six, juvenile services. Debiting the fund balance, two thousand, three hundred, crediting other contracted services, two thousand, three hundred. Uh, this is charged for juvenile ankle monitoring services. Uh, these charges are reimbursed by the juvenile parents, rather than sending the child to detention services. Uh, number seven, sheriff's department, debiting fund balance ninety-two thousand, five ninety-fourty-seven, crediting communication equipment, ninety-two, five ninety-fourty-seven. And that's to make final payment to integrated systems, uh, for communication, this was actually paid by Hardman County nine-one-one on twelve, twenty-three, twenty-four. Money passed through. Uh, number eight, approved by the legislature this week. And number nine, veteran services, debiting fund balance three thousand dollars, crediting travel one thousand, and utilities two thousand. Um, one is tripe and obstacle for hand training, for new veteran service director, and since moving from the National Guard, still the utilities have increased.
Question, on number two and the third, how long would that money stay in that, in there, will it be transferred over what's left, that you hear, how's that run?
It's already been paid out.
It's already been paid out.
Everybody's got.
Now, it would be a distributed starting product.
Or.
Chase would be distributed starting product.
Okay. So it'd be zero.
Any other questions on the budget amendments, please? If not, mayor, I move budget amendments one through four, six, seven, and nine be approved as presented.
Seven. Motion to adjourn, may I be said? In discussion, of course, on your merits. All right, seeing uh, moving to the floor, Madam President, please.
Fayle?
Yes.
Bumper?
Yes.
E. Bear?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Gillum?
Yes.
Brankham?
Yes.
Hansley?
Yes.
Zinkin?
Yes.
Kennamore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Wayne?
Yes.
Wright?
This is approved. All right, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. Uh, we have uh just a couple of things that that I need to go over there real quick for our, for the mayor's report. Uh, we did have a three star, of course, to grant, a few things in our three star that we've been approved for in the first round. Um, those we had mentioned about the AED, we also have in that first round, it's an ambulance monitor and a fibulator. Um, and then we will move into the second phase later on, uh, in December, we apply for to uh, to have a stretch, uh, for the ambulance as well. We'll have more AEDs and uh, and some radio systems as well that we were applying for, so. Uh, those were the three star grant, and we're so grateful that we did that, that we can use for equipment, so we can get each other funding for resources that we need, so. Uh, we do have a proclamation, one that is honoring, um, the two hundred years, uh, for the bicentennial for Baller, we want to wish them a happy birthday. And uh, proclamation that we had read the other night, it did mention, and I want to mention this, uh, Baller has endured throughout the burning of the courthouse, much of the downtown in the Civil War by Union troops, but Baller rebuilt. And became host to many historical figures, including the twenty-first president of the United States, Chester Oxford, who spent part of his childhood here in Baller. As well as the early settlers and family, of course, of our eleventh president, James K. Polk. Um, but what's most important about Baller, as we all say, for our family is the people. And it's a place of tight end family values and friendships that will forever be forged in generations to come. So happy birthday to Baller, happy two hundred years. And also we want to recognize, um, for Rapp, who did a proclamation about violence, and I'll just read this, uh, two items here very quickly. Uh, that thirty-three and thirty percent of all crimes against persons reported to law enforcement in Hardman County involve some form of domestic or sexual violence. And whereas eight individuals lost their lives to domestic violence in West Tennessee. And domestic violence can include verbal, emotional, financial, or physical abuse. And uh, we did that proclamation, and we recognize this month as the uh, uh, rap, uh, for this proclamation this month, and also breast cancer awareness month. And I have one more thing here. I'm going to ask a gentleman to come up, and I do see Ms. Allen back there. Ms. Allen, if you would come forward, and Mary Lane, if you would come up to the front as well. As you all know, what Hardman County's gone through in the last, last few months with the tornadoes, um, this wonderful organization contacted me. And uh wanted to do something for the citizens of Grand Junction. And Ms. Allen, of course, has spearheaded this with Muzeta Zeta, the Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, and they would like to, uh, present to Hardman County, and to, of course, the city of Grand Junction, mayor here. A check for five thousand, six hundred and three dollars and ninety-eight cents, and we're so grateful for you, Ms. Allen.
I just want, I just want to say that, um, our sorority, Zeta Phi Beta Sorority, Muzeta Zeta Chapter, who was chartered here in Baller, Hardman County in nineteen seventy-nine. We provide services for the community, we provide scholarships. we provide services for the community, we provide scholarships, we have adopted Quavo Elementary School, because I used to be the principal there, and we provide services there. And I told the organization that when we heard about the devastation in Grand Junction, when there is a disaster that impact one of us, then all of us are impacted by that particular tragedy. And we are interconnected together whether we want to be or not. So, we need to pull together to help each other. And this is what our sorority, our chapter, wanted to do for Grand Junction, Tennessee. And Curry, get Ms. Allen's store back.
Now, this is the big check, but now I also have here the, the little check that really does... That would take care of that for the week. Thank you, thank you.
You're quite welcome.
All right, let me show the commissioner this one. All right, let's move on down to our public comments. If we have anybody in the, in the general, if anybody would like to say anything about, um, any comments we have in the public? Anybody not saying anything? Patrick Shaw, do you like to, you want to say anything?
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, thank you all for having me tonight. It's good to be here. Very briefly, I'm speaking on behalf of Senator Page, Wally, and myself. We, for the last two, three weeks, have been doing some research to see if we could find some resources for Hartford County because we knew you all were facing, and our understand, have not completely completed the lawsuit. Uh, we were not able to find anything, and that's what we want the commission to know. We know that you met this evening, and you got to take a vote, and I'm not sort of suggesting how you vote. What I will say to you on behalf of Senator Wally, there are no other resources out there for this particular issue. And we wanted to be very clear and prompt because we know that we'll get a call and someone will ask us to give us finance money. And particularly, it was the mayor, because he always do that. But there is not, the governor has asked us, as well as a few other people, to ask you all if you could at least fully settle this without going any farther. And hopefully, that would build a bit of light at the end of the tunnel. But for sure, there is no resources from the state of Tennessee in terms of helping with this situation. Wanted you all to know that, appreciate what you all do, thank you for your work. I know how important it is, I do it every day, but thanks basically for where we are. And we wanted to pass it on, if there are any questions, I'd give that answer. No, sit down.
I've got one.
Yes, sir?
Is there any kind of way you can do any kind of legisstr- legislation where this doesn't happen to other counties?
Uh, I, I think maybe we can, nothing like, I think the law is already in place. Uh, I don't, you know, we can talk about how Hartford County got here. Probably nobody wants to talk about that, but I don't think there was ever any doubt, from the law's point of view, as to how this happened. Uh, sometimes people take matters in their own hands, and they do things, and they break the law, but I think the law, plain mistakes, that no county should be in this position. But out of the new research, if there is anything in that law...
No, I mainly want to see where attorney cannot charge other four counties and put them in this kind of shape too. There ought to be some kind of max or something put into your...
I, I do, I do feel you, Commissioner, I feel you. Of course, you know, attorneys, uh, they have a way of charging for things. Sometimes they will charge, they think they can maybe get away with something that nobody knows about. So, I really don't want to get into that discussion of what I will do. I will make sure and I will ask things to help me. We will look and see if the law, if there is a weak place in the law somewhere that would allow this to happen, we will definitely fix that. Definitely.
Thank you, Representative. Thank you, any more questions for Representative Shaw?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Representative Shaw. And here is some legislation being handed around about that, um, from the Tom Trotter's office. We had talked about that a few times. And because of this situation, then it would also be also for the federal level too. We was talking to Congressmen Cusco about that as well. It would have to be something similar to what you call a court reform, which is based in insurance. But you'd have to base it somehow on the, on what the tax basis is for the total county of what you receive for your part. And if there's a way to work that out. And I know Commissioner Lear, you talked about that before, when you talked with the commission. And there has to be something, because it, it doesn't just affect our county. It can affect any municipality, any local government. And, and there has to be something done at some point. So, that being said, we're moving on down into our lawsuit update. If you would, please, Mr. Connor.
Good evening. So, on the lawsuit updates, we have in the package, I believe, the update in September. And that package, the cases, the Hartford County versus Tiller, that's the one where we're going to make Mr. Tiller leave the cars that are on the property out there. And I'm supposed to mention Tiller twice. And he tells me he's moving the cars, and we're going to check on that. And he's going to call me back next week and we'll see, have what kind of progress he's making. And then there are, uh, this Jones and Joy versus Hartford County case, except for trial in July of twenty twenty-six. That's been defended by Chris Ayden, who's hired by the, uh, trust, the City of County Insurance Company. Excuse me, Ricky Jones versus Hartford County. That one is set for trial April of twenty, uh, I think twenty twenty-six. And Nathan Tilly, who's hired by the county on that. And then we'll see. Then there's the other, one more area, Anne Humphrey Jones and Melissa Jones versus Hartford County. And that is, uh, that's been defended by Mr. Tilly, who's also been retained by the county's insurance company. Just been accounted for. So, the multiple case, nothing's happened on that since we had mediation back in August. Just kind of been sitting there while we deal with this Perry case. And on the Perry case, the judge, federal judge entered, the judgment, uh, attorney fees for Mr. Sessions, the amount of four million five hundred and forty-seven dollars, one hundred and sixty-five dollars and thirty cents, and cost in the amount of forty-five dollars, one hundred and fifty-two dollars and one cent. And then subsequent to that, Mr. Sessions sent, uh, a bill for attorney fees that he incurred in the, in fitting his compensation for, uh, attorney fees. And that was approximately, well, the final bill, that was approximately two hundred and fourteen thousand. But there was a, a court ordered bill to be awarded him for the costs of, well, he brings that amount to two hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and one dollars and five cents. And so, the total of fees he caused awarded in this case is four million eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-six cents. And that's what the county owes to, uh, Mr. Sessions. Any questions?
Any questions, Mr. Connor? Any questions? Are there any motions to approve?
I make a motion that we approve some four million eight hundred and eight thousand, eight hundred and fifteen dollars.
Is that, is that be paid at one last sum? Paid at one last sum, okay.
I second.
And we have motion on the floor, a second discussion. Any discussion? All right, seeing none, Madam Kirk, we'll move into a roll call, please, please.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
De Beere?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hillen?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Hasman?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Kellmore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Le dire?
No.
Miller?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
All right, motion passes, and we will, uh, get our financial table, start work on that immediately. This one. All right. Our next commission meeting will be, um... What's we got, what do we got, we got something else? Didn't mean to cut you off, sorry.
No, I was just, I was saying, I thought I had a board, I didn't know if there's anything... I guess we can still negotiate on the natural matter, if that's what you'd like on, so...
That's, that's what I recommend, the council, the commission. But the lawyers can see trying to come term on the Blood Trail Program. On the rise. On the authorization to, to go, move into negotiations, I think. All right, that's your motion, Mr. Baffert.
I second.
Motion being made, made and seconded to authorize the council to move into negotiations. Indiscussion of the motion. All right, Madam Kirk, we agree, roll call.
Dale?
Yes.
Buffer?
Yes.
De Beere?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hillen?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Hasman?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Kellmore?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Le dire?
Yes.
Sane?
Yes.
Bickers?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Wright?
Like, this is where this may all, uh, uh, situation there, financial stability, so... We'll put that in as a matter of record too. All right, our next commission meeting will be November the eighteenth. Is there any other business that needs to, uh, say something to the commission? Mayor? Yes, Mr. Grant? I'd like to thank Representative Shaw for being here tonight, even though he didn't bring us good news and money. But I'd like to recognize that he has worked hard on the hill, securing grants for Hartford County. And we'd like to know that we can count on him in the future to secure more. Uh, we're going to be looking for some grants on our airport, as we have a big project going on up there. And we haven't started to tunnel yet, and that's going to be a hurdle that we're going to need your assistance on. We're telling that the...
Master.
Yeah, this weekend, you know, Baller's celebrating its bicentennial. A lot of history in Baller, I'm not going to get into all of it. I want you to participate in it this weekend. We have the barbecue contest also, we have a home tour that's going to consist of the Fields, McNeil, um, historic district. A lot of activities going on, so it starts Friday, I believe, a big weekend. So, everyone's invited to come out, attend, and have a good time, enjoy the history of Baller.